Okay, we can get this meeting started if everybody could take a seat. Thank you for coming out tonight. Welcome everyone. Thank you, thank you. Just before we start, could you make sure you turn off your phones? And if you need to take a phone call, could you please step out in the hallway? And take your phone calls? Thank you. All council members are here tonight. We have the mayor, GL, our city attorney, and Brooke, our recorder. Thank you for being here. We will start off with a pledge and Dale Cox will be giving our pledge tonight. Thank you Dale.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you Dale, we appreciate that. Okay, so how we are going to be running this meeting tonight? We are going to take each ordinance separately. And our finance administrative officer Brenda Moore will be presenting our first one. Is the considering an ordinance adopting the rate of tax levies for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2022 and ending June 30th, 2023. Brenda is presenting. Thank you Brenda.
Thank you, it's been a long time coming. And this is my very first truth in taxation meeting, so that I've had to speak at. Okay, so let's start with, turning the mouse on, okay. Let's start with what is truth in taxation? Basically, truth in taxation is the common term used for Utah's property tax system. The statute known as truth in taxation was passed in 1985. It has been modified, but in general, it's the same as it was then. It is designed to prevent property taxes from increasing just because property values are increasing. Cities are guaranteed the same property tax revenue plus new growth each year. And then the mill levy adjusts down as property values increase. This has never happened, but if property values decreased, the mill levy would adjust up and we would get the same amount of revenue. There is a process outlined if the city wants to increase the revenue it receives. And that is why we are here. We have done the public notices as required. We did an extra public open house. And that is why we're here is to have a public hearing on the increase in the property tax revenues and go from there. So in the general fund, which is what we talk about when we talk about property taxes. This is just a quick overview. We'll go into more detail when we're talking about the actual budget. Sales tax accounts for the largest part of our revenue are 39%. Property tax is 19%. And then there's a whole bunch of charges for services and all the other stuff. In a perfect world, it would be 50/50. That way if sales taxes tank, which is possible soon, property tax would remain stable. Property tax is stable due to truth in taxation. Sales tax can be very volatile. Right now, I haven't seen the last figures for 2022, but we're okay for last year. I have no idea what's going on so far this year. How the property tax rate is calculated? In calendar 2020, we'll just go through this really quick. There was $5.5 billion of taxable property in Murray City. We were guaranteed $9.1 million in revenue plus the growth of 109,000. You take that 9.2 divided by the 5.5 billion and you get a tax rate of .001689. Calendar 21, we start again with the 9298. The new growth was $127,000. The property had increased slightly between 20 and 21, not like it has this year. And they take that 9.4 divided into that 5.8 billion and you get a tax rate of .001608. So we did not have a truth in taxation that year. So the tax went down. This year, the taxable property in Murray City has now climbed to $7.2 billion. It, that went up 22%. So how we calculated this time is our prior year's revenue of 9.4. We had $66,000 of new property tax growth. And then now the city is requesting $1.4 million of new revenue. That is a 15% on just the city's portion of the property tax. So you take the 10.9 that we are requesting divided by the $7.2 billion and you get a tax rate of .001513. It is less than last year because property values went up 22%. I'm only asking for 15%. So it still went down. That's how it works. Last year, fiscal year 22, which is the 21 calendar year, Murray was 12th out of all the cities for property tax levy rate. Some of the cities you have to add what the fire districts and the police districts do to kind of get a comparable to Murray, but that's, we were 12th. I have a feeling we're going to remain 12th because most of the people above us are asking for property tax increases also. This is the ad that went out for people or cities who are having their truth in taxation tonight. Ours is calculated with the library included. So that's why it only says 11.8%. The library is not requesting a tax levy increase. So that kind of lowers my 15%. So those are all the other cities that are having a truth in taxation or increases. And some, some school districts. School districts will be meeting on a different night. So if you happen to be in one of these school districts, they will have their truth in taxation hearing on a different night than ours. So history property tax rates really quick. You can see they went down. We did a 46% increase in 2018 and they've gone down since. So you're probably worried that the 15% is going to be on that full $1,200 bill you get. It's not. It's going to be on the Murray section of that $1,200 bill you get or whatever it is. Murray School District, if you live in within the school district bounds, Murray School Districts and other schools get about 57 cents of every dollar that you pay in property tax. Salt Lake County gets approximately 19 cents. Murray City gets 16 cents. The library gets four and other small entities get the other four cents. If you're in the Granite School District, the Granite School District and other school things get 59 cents. Salt Lake County gets 17, Murray gets 13. And then the library gets four cents. And then you've got some water sewer people that you have to pay if you're in that area, they're four cents and then some others for three. That's mosquito abatement, various other entities. So a property tax need is, property tax increase is needed for the following reasons. And by the way, I live in Murray, so I'm raising my property taxes too. So when property values, as we went over, property values increase, the state rate is adjusted down unless we ask for more revenue. And that's why we're here. Property tax growth is averaged 109,000 per year since calendar 18 and with 66,000 in calendar 2022. That is less than the cost of living increases during those, the CPI during those years. In order to keep and recruit public safety, police and fire, the personnel budget for public safety has increased 17% or $3.2 million since the last property tax increase. 2 million of that has happened between last year and this year. We have very good police officers, firefighters. I feel like they're the best in the valley. And they, they work really hard at keeping their operations budgets down. But you gotta compete for the employees, especially the new and the younger ones who don't have loyalty yet and haven't been in the system so long in our system that they have fallen in love with it like some of the older firefighters have. So we're just trying to be competitive. We're being average. We have above average personnel, but we are trying to stay right in the middle of everybody out there. We can't afford to be above average, sorry guys. In 2018, the last property tax increase of 45%, the city was asked over and over again to do frequent smaller increases. Due to pandemic, we have not done that for the last three years. This year, we decided that there's just no way we could postpone it another year and not do at least some property tax increase. How much is the increase? The new revenue is a 15% increase for the city tax or $1.4 million. No increase was requested for the library. The average city residents, which is assessed according to Salt Lake County Assessor, at $523,000. The tax increase will be $56.38 per year. That's for the city portion. Or $4.70 per month. For commercial properties valued at 523,000, they don't get a break on their value. Houses due, they have to pay it 100%. They will see an increase of $102.51 or $8.54 per month. The amount that an individual house, that an individual or a business increase may experience will vary based on how your property value increased in comparison with the other areas or with the property types within the city. If commercial, which I know commercial did not increase as much as residential in value. The homeowners will most likely see a larger increase than the commercial property will. It's just the way the system works. We're guaranteed a certain amount of revenue. They do the math, then they multiply it. If your value went up higher than somebody else's, your, your increase may be bigger than someone else's. Any questions, council?
Okay, we'll turn this time over to-
Actually, I have a question. You mentioned about sales tax. Do we get the numbers yet?
No, I can't, don't get the next numbers until the 20th. And as we know, the last number was flat. So, and actually decreased from the previous year. So I won't know until the 20th, 21st depending on when the state tax commission decides to send it out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Brenda. Any more questions, council? Okay, so at this time, we'll turn it over to the citizens. If you would like to make a comment, please fill out one of these forms from our executive director, Jennifer Kennedy. Limit your remarks to just the property tax. We will do the budget after we take care of this first one, this first ordinance on the property. So if anybody would like to come up, you are more than welcome to come to the podium, state your name, where you live, and fill out a form. So go right ahead. Okay.
My name is John Rush. I live on Harwood Lane in Murray. And thank you for allowing me this opportunity. It's a great privilege. I actually have sat where you have sat. And I know it's a very difficult job, the mayor as well. So first of all, thank you for your service. I greatly respect and appreciate you giving us the opportunity of your service. Murray City needs dedicated public servants like you, so thank you. Secondly, I need to make it clear, I speak for only myself as a private citizen. I work for a major global corporation who has a huge presence in Murray. So I just need to make it clear, I speak only for myself. Your job is not an easy one. You, it's always conflicting interests, competing interests. You have to choose between sometimes the lesser of the evils. Some things we have to do, as you know, I mean, we have to take care of our city employees. They, we have great city employees. They do a terrific job. Murray City has extraordinary city services. We really do. And the city has always prided themselves on that. So thank you very much for taking care of your employees. The other part of it is though, we, we have to take care of the taxpayers. The taxpayers are, it's, it's the lifeline of Murray City. It's the lifeblood of the city. The property tax owners, the citizens, the taxpayers. I think personally, and this is just my own personal opinion, that should be your overarching goal, to run the city and run it well as you do without placing an undue burden on the taxpayers. We have an awful lot of senior citizens that live in Murray. Certainly, I'm joining that group very shortly. But a lot of them are on fixed incomes. And they count on you guys to exercise your fiduciary responsibility and be good stewards of the public trust and their finances. You have second, third generation Murray families who have lived here, who love living here. They take great pride in the city. But when, when, when the finances are tough and you're on a fixed income, social security and whatever else you have saved over the years, any little bit makes a huge difference and can really have a big impact on people's lives. So the only thing I ask is that keep in mind as you make these financial decisions, and they're hard to make. There are no easy answers. There aren't. It's just compromise all the way around, right? And then hopefully you find the middle of the plate. You cobble together some sort of budget that works for everybody. Nobody gets everything they want, but everybody should get something, right? I think that's the genesis of democracy and what, what you folks do every day. Just keep the taxpayer in mind when you make these decisions. I think sometimes they're overlooked because they are the silent majority. A lot of folks don't show up here and they don't speak their mind. But your decisions have enormous impacts on their lives, all of ours, mine as well. I am counting on you as other people to look out for me. And lastly, and I'm sorry, I'm going to go over one second. I do apologize, thank you for allowing me. I talked, I talked to Doug Hill when I was out there a little earlier. You know, this stuff can be done. I forget the year and Doug has a better memory than I do, probably 1999 or 2000. Anyway, we built a rec center and we built Willow's Pond Park. And we're doing the, and we did the project across the street, of course. But we were able to get together and do the rec center and do Willow's Pond Park with no tax increase. And that was the goal. We decided if we were going to do that, and it was $15 million, we would do it with no tax increase. And with some great work by city employees and Don Wetzel, who was the director of finance, and GL was there and Doug was there, we were able to do it to, to build a couple of world-class facilities in Murray without, that people enjoy still, without placing an additional burden on the taxpayers. So a little time, a little effort, a little energy, it can be done. So thank you so much. I appreciate this opportunity and, and keep up the great work.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm Cal Madsen at Shiloh Way in Murray. I'm one of those silent little guys that have a fixed income. Been on it for 20 years. And this last tax increase is like a millstone around my neck. I anticipate tax increases every year. I can adjust my, my budget and it's been okay. But this last one is a kick in the butt. And it really is a serious burden on people like myself that have to live on a fixed income. I could have gone to 7-Eleven, I guess, and gotten another job. But I'm kind of enjoying retirement. And the more I pay in taxes, the less I'm enjoying that retirement. So I guess my point is that you consider those people who have lived here a long time and are on fixed incomes and love to be here, love to live here, proud to live here and appreciate all that you do. But remember us little guys, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Crystal Walker. I live on American Avenue. I'm married to one of our firefighters. Just a couple of quick things that I love about living in Murray, the park. My, my streets get shoveled at least twice during a snowstorm. My streets get swept quarterly at least when there's not snow on the ground. My power has not gone out in at least three years. And the last time it went out for more than a minute was 10 years ago. The golf course, I was out on a job this week and I said that I live in Murray and both the guys that I was working with were like, oh, I love that golf course. I love the library. It's a great place. I love the schools. And prices are going up and it costs more to keep people around. And granted, I'm a little partial to some of these blue uniforms, but Sandy City is running short crews because they won't pay, they don't pay enough. And if that house fire had happened in Sandy, those people might have lost a lot more than they did. But these guys showed up and they were actually on the news in Philadelphia. So that's how important that is. The police are great. They're super friendly and I realize that it's a burden for some people, but prices keep going up. And as long as we want to keep being the great city that we are, have all of the amenities, then we've got to start paying people. And just quickly, it feels like a lot of money, but I checked, my brother and I live in comparably priced homes. He lives in Mill Creek, I live in Murray. His Unified Fire Authority bill is more than my Murray City bill. So my brother pays more to just the fire department than I paid to have the park, the snow plows, and my brother doesn't get his street plowed. He just, he doesn't see a plow until days after a snowstorm. I see a snow plow after the starts. So I realize that it may be a burden for some people, but we've got to keep, if it's, if we're not paying for it, we're losing it. And then we live in Mill Creek.
Thank you. Any more comments? Make sure you fill out the forms and get it to Jennifer Kennedy, please. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Clark Bullen. I live in district three. I, going to all of the meetings about taxation this year is fascinating. I think everyone should do it and it's a very informative process. And I appreciate all the comments that have been given. But I just want to say from my observation in, in the cheap seats that the council has worked really hard to reduce the overall taxation rate, to give as much as we could to our employees, to our uniformed employees. And I think they have done an excellent job, in my opinion, with a really, really hard task, really hard decisions in a really tough year. And so it may feel like when people get the ultimate notice that their taxes are going up this much, they may think, why doesn't the city council care about me? But I have seen nothing but the council do their best to not just show the citizens, but actually fight for them. And, and if you go back and watch the tapes, it's all there. So I would just encourage people to attend in the future. And then, and I also think Brenda did a great job putting together the budget. Once again, a very hard task. And I was just very impressed with how much our council and the administration care about our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dale Cox and I live on Bullion Street. And I can't believe I lived long enough to believe or to agree with everything Clark Bullen said. I wasn't gonna let that slide. I was on the council for four years. I had the honor to sit up here and Jan and I are on a fixed income, so I feel, feel the pain. But Murray City has probably the best, well, not probably, and I've said that from up there, we have the best department heads in the world. We have the best employees in the world. And to keep those employees, and it's not, I mean, we have the, and I agree, we have the best fire department in the state. We have the best police department in the state. Anytime you need them, they're there. But a lot of people overlook, we have the best water department in the state. Your water, when's the last time any of us had to boil our water? You hear about that all the time. We have the best streets department. We have the best finance department. And I'm going to say this and GL's head will swell, we have the best legal department. We have the best recorder. Everybody in Murray City is top-notch. And every city in this state would die to have the people that we have serving us. And you're right, it costs money. We, we went three years without raising taxes because we felt the pain. But this council has done a great job. The mayor asked for 20%. I know the mayor. He probably needed 25. He can sit on a nickel and find a dime. So he's, he stretched everything he possibly can to make this city work. And if we're going to enjoy the parks, we're going to enjoy the amenities that we have, we have to pay for them. And you're right, Sandy City lost six firefighters. You know what it would cost? We could ask Joey, hundreds of thousands of dollars to replace those and train them. We have a good system in place in this council. Thank God we have, we have three that voted to move the budget forward. Hopefully the other two will do the same because the employees are the black blood of this city. And everything we get is because of the men and women that work here. And that's regardless of, there's not one employee more important than the other. Every one of them do a job in this city that we should be thankful for. And with that, I'll sit down. But thank you for doing what you do. I've done it. I had hair in, or color in my hair when it started. I don't anymore. So thank you for what you do and thank you for the budget that you have, the tax burden that you keep as low as you possibly can to make sure our people are paid and the services are there. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, anyone else that would like to come and make a comment or anything? Okay, so I will close this section and turn it over to the council. Council, do you have any questions for Brenda? Go ahead and we'll take one at a time. Start with Kat Martinez. Do you have anything? Okay, Wazalba, do you have anything?
No, but I do just want to clarify a few things. We did work really hard as a council in coming together. We were unaware of the 20% until we got our books. And we worked really hard in bringing it down to 15%. I believe the council really worked in coming to a consensus on that. I know some of us would have wished we had the 20%, but I think it gives us an opportunity to really hold us as a city accountable for that 15% and not overspend or not over, make decisions that are too rash after COVID especially. And a lot of us are hurting. And I think it's such a great opportunity that those of us who do have the privilege to pay, be able to pay that 15% to do that. But we also are a community that we're looking out for each other. And I've heard that over and over again from my constituents. And when I came into that role as chair at the time, I really wanted to hear what everybody had to say. And I really took in what constituents had said to me. So with that being said, I do agree, we really worked well together. And there was a lot of things that were on the chopping block or a lot of things that were questioned, that we all had questions about. And we probably still have some of those questions still. But I think overall, as, as someone who was leading those conversations, as someone who, who really was struggling with just any increase, that 15% brought us there. And I can't say what's going to happen in the future, but coming after COVID, I think that was a great accomplishment on, on our parts as a team and as a council together. So I just wanted to say that. One more thing about that. You know, I really look forward to hearing more from constituents about it. I know that we probably- You know, I really look forward to hearing more from constituents about it. I know that we probably, I know a few of you are here, but I've heard from quite a few and, and it's not to say we don't appreciate the staff or the team. We, I personally do appreciate all of you. And I think you guys have all done a great job. And if the recession would have hit today, I think all of you guys would have stepped back and said, you know what? I won't take that increase for this year or we'll reevaluate it, or maybe would have reevaluated in general. But I think a lot of us that I've heard from, as from citizens, is what about us who are paying that too? And I think we just need a little bit more transparency and we, we try to do that within those conversations as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Turner, do you have anything?
I'm good. I'm just so glad we were able to do what we did and to give the uh COLA that we were able to do and uh just let our employees know how much we really, really appreciate them. You guys are awesome. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I have no questions.
You have nothing?
No questions.
Thank you. Okay, so I guess this is the part where I will ask for a approval of this ordinance. Do I have anyone that would?
I move we approve the ordinance adopting the rate of tax levies for the fiscal year commencing July first, twenty twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Brooke, could you do the call? Thank you.
No. Aye.
I believe this um tax increase is burdensome to my constituents. That's what I've heard um through discussions. So I would have liked to see a smaller increase, so I vote no on the tax increase.
Aye.
Aye.
And I would like to say, thank you Brenda for everything that you have done for our property taxes and teaching us and continuing to teach us. Thank you so very much. So now we are gonna go on to number two, considering an ordinance adopting the final twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year budget for Murray City, including the library fund budget. Thank you, Brenda.
Okay, so it's been a while since we talked about the budget in a whole. As you know, we've already approved the MBA budget and the RDA budget. So even though they may be mentioned, they're, and they're all in the budget that's on the website, they have already been approved. So, and just as a note, if there is citizens who truly are low income, fixed income, make sure you go to the county and get a waiver on your property tax. Um, you've been paying into the system for decades. It's time, if you don't have the money and don't have the income, to get some back. So I don't think if it is charity, I think it is you've paid your dues. So, uh, final budget hearing. So this is a budget overview for personnel. Um, just some quick summary. The step M, step plan increases were funded in this um budget. Uh, a seven percent cost of living adjustment was funded. Medical and dental insurance increased three and one percent respectively. Workers' comp premiums and retirement contributions actually decreased for most employees. Uh, we had some, a public hearing and uh you passed, I think it was, anyway, you passed a resolution that we will continue to pick up the tier-two employee um public safety contributions that in could be required of the um, the public safety people, fire mainly. We did authorize five new positions, a police officer, gets them back to the two thousand eleven level. Uh, a streets concrete crew, so we can move faster on some of our um sidewalk repairs and priorities and that. And so we can keep up with the street repaving as much as possible. A recreation coordinator, we have thousands of kids who want to play and adults. There are some adult leagues out there and then we'll be able to add a few more. Um, a theater manager and the theater technical support, which actually won't start until the next spring. We adjusted the fire captains, battalion chiefs, the city building official and our building inspectors pay ranges to be average with the market. We are, five other positions were adjusted to align their salaries with what they do. And general fund personnel increased by seven percent and all the other funds personnel increased by seven percent, almost exact amount of the COLA. Well, it is the exact amount of the COLA, but it's, it's a weird math thing considering that the.
Brenda, can you say what, can you explain what COLA is?
Cost of living adjustment. So everybody got that and some of our part-time people, we have had to raise their salaries also. They don't get a cost of living. But in order to get lifeguards and to get um people to mow the lawns and we've had to raise their, their um wages. So the operations budget in the general fund, after we account for the one-time firefighting California revenue that we received last year and that we spent fighting fires in California, the operations budget for the general fund had a zero percent increase. We did not increase the cost to operate. Everybody says they can live off of what they had last year. We've realigned it some, but um it stayed at zero. The budget for power purchases, this is the big one. This is one of the um big increases with two point eight million in power. Uh, just because the Glen Canyon Dam is not providing us as much power and it costs us more. So um we are looking or have other resources, but we still have to buy some power from them. The power fund has budgeted for a master plan, which they haven't updated or had in a long time, just to make sure that they're right on where they need to be and a rate study. Because with the rising costs, we need to see if our rates are okay. Water, wastewater, solid waste and the stormwater funds, they're doing what they need to do to maintain their delivery and/or collection systems. Our biggest priority is if you flush, it goes away. If you turn on your tap, you got water. If it rains and some of the storms we've had have been really heavy rain, it flows away from your house.
Brenda, we don't see any of this things. You need to move your screens.
It's okay. It's okay. You're fine. There we go. Thank you, Brenda. Some days are better than others.
It's fine.
Okay, the library is continuing to save for the new build, a new building. As soon as they know where they're gonna put it and what we're gonna do, um, we will let you know. Thank you. But they are saving, so hopefully we won't have to do future property tax increases. Their costs have also been increasing, so they're not saving as much as they originally planned, but they're okay. Budget overview for the general fund. My best estimate is that the city will finish fiscal year twenty-two around twenty-eight point four percent in the general fund reserves before I do our final year-end transfer to keep us down at twenty-six. That, those funds are caused by either revenue being too high or coming in higher than I budgeted, which is a good thing because I'm a conservative budgeter. And, and/or our department heads and our departments not spending every penny that they are allocated. We don't go out and buy thousands of paper clips or paper or anything at the end of every year because we don't pull away of their budget if they don't necessarily spend it. So that stuff is going into capital projects and will be used in the twenty twenty-four budget for fire trucks and cars and all of that kind of stuff, one-time purchases. And then I projected, we're gonna use five hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars worth of reserves. That's one of the ways I bu- I balance the budget. And that will leave us at about twenty-five percent. So if all our revenue dried up, we could pay our employees and operate for three months. Hopefully that will never happen. The city will receive uh the ARPA plan funds, in fact, we actually have. Um, and that is budgeted for the revenue to be received in the general fund and it automatically transferred to the capital projects fund for future projects. We haven't decided what to do with it. Um, it's one-time money. I can't use it to pay the salaries. The first bond payment for the um city hall will be made in November. We won't be quite in there, but we'll have to make the bond payment of one point eight million is being paid this year. It will hover right around one point eight million for thirty years. Fund summaries of all the funds. The general fund, of course, is using the five hundred and seventy-two thousand. Capital fund is decreasing, um, they're spending fifteen million dollars in projects and going to decrease their fund balance by eleven million. That is exactly what the ju- the capital projects fund is supposed to do, supposed to spend it on roads, buildings, maintenance, all of that fun stuff. Central garage, um, they always maintain, they're, they're staying the same except for I'm letting them do two capital projects so that they will be safer as they're operating. You can kind of go down the list. Library fund is saving money, the um water funds, all of those decreases are mostly due to capital projects that we're coming out of. So um, I don't worry too much. I'm tracking the stormwater fund, but it's doing much better since we gave them some ARPA funds. So they're all in there. That's all of the, the effect of payrolls, operations, maintaining their systems. Again, the general fund summary, what I hope is happening, that we'll finish at twenty-five percent. We do have that point two sales, point two option sales tax, which we have been sending to the capital projects fund to get caught up on all of our uh building maintenance for all of our buildings and all of that stuff. To balance this budget with only a fifteen percent property tax increase and only using five hundred thousand dollars in reserve, I am not moving four point one million dollars of that over to, it's kind of scary, twenty thirty, it goes away unless everybody can get the legislature to make it permanent. Don't know if that's gonna happen. So at some point, we're gonna have to find another revenue source, but right now with the economy the way it is, this is what we're gonna do. Where it comes from, this is the same graph as before, different colors, because I co- copied it a different way. We have transfers in from the utilities, property tax, sales tax, we, building permits. Hopefully, everybody will get their budget. Hopefully, sales tax will hang in. I did not plan a huge sales tax increase, so hopefully we will be okay. We won't know for another six months. This is where it goes. Sixty-four percent of the general fund revenue, and it almost works in the other funds, but not quite because they do more capital. Sixty-four percent of it is for personnel. Retirement, um, twenty percent is for operations. Eight percent is for, in this budget, is for transfers and eight percent is for debt service. Debt service includes the city hall payment. The transfer is just, the general fund owes the RDA for some land that the city hall is sitting on, the, and they're paying that. The general fund also transfers some money to the golf course. Um, it's a lot cheaper to run a golf course on that open space than it is to just mow the lawns because it's fifty thou- sixty thousand dollars. And then we are transferring the ARPA money to the capital projects. So that's what eight percent is. Without the ARPA money, it would be down around two percent that would be going out. This is where it goes by category. Police and fire are the first two lines. Transfers and debt service are next, and then all of the other little, or all of the other things that the city does. Parks, recs, arts. I divided it up more than just by department, just so you could see the to get various um project, things that are run out there. Some highlights, budgets of revenue without intergovernmental, which is the ARPA money, or bond proceeds increased eight percent by budget. Um, I think it's conservative, so. And some of that is, the, most of that is the property tax increase of one point four million dollars. Personnel in the general fund increased to seven percent and operations stayed the same. CIP fund, these are the fun things or some of the good things that we are doing. Some people will agree with them all, some people will disagree with some of them. This is what is on the docket for the CIP fund. Total projects, fifteen million dollars. The Murray Theater's been funded. Hopefully we'll get some contributions to decrease that amount. The Murray Mansion is finishing up, that should be the last amount of money we need to do to remodel that into a museum. Uh, Parks is gonna create a storage building so that we can do something with the armory that's more than store dirt over there. That will blend into the park. I think it's gonna be a valuable project. We're gonna start with the plans for that for the five hundred thousand. We got some police cars. Uh, ambulance and other fire equipment. The really interesting thing is fire actually has less salaries because you have less people, but your equipment budget is way more than the police. So it's all even. You end up even. Um, but they're pretty. I love those trucks. Uh, playground, we're updating a playground in the Murray Park. I believe it's the one where this, by where the swings are and I am told it will probably be a toddler. It will be designed for the little guys, so that will be really fun. Um, streets projects, three point three million dollars. Some of that is uh transportation tax and some of that is bond proceeds from a um bond we did last year, so we could get a jump on some um streets. Ongoing facility maintenance, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand. Yes, the library had a air conditioner that broke, but it's in their budget. They're, they're replacing a thirty-year, thirty-year-old air conditioner this week. Other equipment and projects, two point one million dollars. Just some quickies, other projects, the water fund is doing two point five million dollars worth of equipment, well-maintenance and replacements. Wastewater's got one million, going out for sewer line replacements, rehabs and equipment. Uh, the wastewater fund is also having to do, uh, send one point five million dollars to Central Valley for their debt on that new plant rebuild. Um, plus some ongoing expenses. Power has budgeted, they probably won't get it all spent, but there's gonna start a whole bunch of projects, some point nine million for equipment. A transformer, which costs one point five million dollars. Central station rebuild because it's, uh, I think it's starting to sink. Upgrade and AMI metering, that means automatic, we won't have to send out meter readers. And um hydro plant needs to be rebuilt in the Penn Stock. Solid waste, they're a little bit smaller, fifteen thousand dollars to repair or replace one of their green waste trailers. And then stormwater is doing a project over in the Clover Metals, fifty-four hundred south project. It had all kinds of other addresses in the thing, but nine hundred twenty-five thousand to help some water flow away from some houses. So that is what the budget in general consists of. You've had it for a few months. There were a lot of compromises in there, a lot of things. Um, so, any questions?
Thank you. Kat, any questions? Wasalba, any questions? Diane?
No question, just a comment. Um, excellent job. We've really, uh, the process was great. It's been wonderful working with you and going through this, so I really wanna um hats off to you on the great, a job well done.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll turn it over to the citizens. If you would like to come and make any comments on number two of considering an ordinance adopting the final twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year budget only. On comments on that. Yes, come to the uh podium, make sure you state your name, address. And when you get done, please get a form from Bren- um, from Jennifer.
Peter Kling, six oh two Lincoln Place, District Three. Uh, one question was, um, thank you Brenda for your presentation, was the Utopia budget, don't we pay an annual amount towards that? That's my question.
Hey Brenda, would you like to come and talk about Utopia? Thank you.
In general figures, we pay approximately one point nine million dollars of Utopia debt. They are paying us back this year. UIA is sending us five hundred and seventy thousand dollars worth of dividends back. So we're netting about one point four, which is down four hundred thousand dollars from last year. So, do you, IA and Utopia, their revenues have come up enough that we can, they can start paying us back for some, well, offsetting and starting paying some of their own debt. Their goal is to pay a hundred percent and then pay us back for everything we've already paid. I'm just happy right now with five hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. I'll take what I can get. The more people that get on that service, which is really good, the more money they can send us. the more money they can send us. No, it's in the budget. There is a debt line in the debt service of 1.9-ish million dollars. I could look up the exact number. Um, and then there is a revenue line in the intergovernmental, intergovernmental revenues of uh 500 and some thousand dollars.
Thank you Brenda. Okay. Any more comments about the budget? Okay, we'll turn it back over to the council. Council, do you have any other questions or comments?
Diane? Uh, no, just what I said before goes for this as well.
I need to close the public hearing.
Oh, good, good point.
Thank you GL. Go ahead Diane.
Okay. Anyway, what I said, my last comment also goes for this as well. Thank you all. And I didn't add, thank you Brenda. You've been great. We really appreciate you.
Hey, anyone else?
I'll add my comments before my vote.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to say, I know we talked a lot about equipment for parks and rec and for the police department and operations. I personally would love to see that operations increase um, in our budget because I do believe we have some equipment that we've been holding on to for years and years and years that can use either new equipment or, you know, um, I know we've been working on updating some of those equipment to reuse over time. And I know the fire department has some items too. And so if we, you know, in the next budget year, I know that would possibly increase that budget line item. But I think, I think it's worth, worth it. You know, we want our snow piles to be up to date. And I think that's one way of looking at the budget too, is looking at the operational increase in, in that. And I know every department head has worked really hard in decreasing what they have in their operations to give to their staff and it, and it shows. And that's why we have great people within, within the city as well. But that's one, and I said it before, but that was one item that I really wanted to, to hash out and work with the staff on and, and see and, and be able to give those items to them as well.
Thank you. No other comments? Hey, we'll turn, may I have a motion to approve this ordinance?
I would be happy to do that.
Thank you Diane.
Um, I would like to make an, a motion to adopt the ordinance adopting the final 2022, 2023 fiscal year budgets for Murray City, including the library fund budget.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Brooke, could you come over? Thank you.
Um, one last thing before I give my vote. I do want to encourage, and I know I've had discussions with the mayor about this, but in working on getting somebody to help with grant writing to give us more funding for those operation items within the city, there is tons of money coming down the pipe. I think it's a great opportunity for us to kind of supplement some of those areas and get what we need for the city. Um, I know it's a big ask, but it, it's definitely would help with some of those areas and light items. Um, with that said, I am voting for the budget, so aye.
Aye.
Um, I have a couple of comments as well. So I remember one of the first council meetings I came to, the mayor sat in this seat uh when he was the council member. And I remember him giving a very eloquent speech before he cast a vote. And so I hope I can do half as good as you do. Um, so I wrote a couple of notes down and um, I'll read them now. So as much as I trust our incredible mayor, through my time as a CPA, I've been taught to trust but verify. As we went through the process, I felt that the common sentiment was, well, the mayor's asking for it, so we must need it. While I agree the increases may have been warranted, I challenged my colleagues to thwart the status quo. I felt that we could have taken more out of reserves. We need to dig deep and get creative in our thinking. While I believe we should honor the past, Murray is known as a leader, a diamond in the rough. It's time for us to step up and change the way we operate. I asked that we pull out elected official salaries and I still ask for that again. Uh, and to go for it as we look at future budgets. We need to ensure that we have full transparency. All this being said, I love Murray and I'm so honored to serve its incredible people. I believe our city, I believe in our city and I believe in our incredible women and men who work in Murray. I support our incredible Murray employees, including our heroes in police and fire and our behind-the-scenes heroes here at city hall or in the parks department, public works, power, sewer, et cetera. I believe that this cola is really important and will help, hopefully help all of you at least maintain your standard of living that you have now with the increases we've seen. And with that, I vote yes on passing the budget.
Aye. Aye. Hey, so I would like to make a comment. I want everyone to know that the codders are on a fixed income as well. My husband has been retired since the pandemic. And so I know how that feels. And I want to thank again Brenda, you did a superb job. I really, really, if you have not gotten one of these, please pick one of these up. They have been excellent information. I appreciate the mayor for everything that he has done and will continue to do for our city and for our citizens. Thank you. And I will turn some time over to the mayor now.
Well, thanks. Um, just real quick answer to Rosalba's um question. She has requested for grant funding. Just so you know, and I know Rosalba knows this, that we, every department um is involved with grant uh writing. Uh, Kim Shortson, Danny Astle before, Russ Kakala now. Everyone uh always, always uh proceeds with options that are out there for grant funding. And we have received many, many grants, so we will continue to do that in that area. We could hire a grant writer, just be another hundred thousand dollars. I don't know. But anyway, so uh, anyway, we, we uh, and the, and the budget, when you, Rosalba, you had mentioned about the budget uh that you'd not gotten the information before that, that's how it works. You don't get the information before. You get it the night of and you were, you were emailed that immediately. And so you don't get it before. That's just how it works. So anyway, but thank you and uh appreciate all your support. You guys are awesome. Thank you.
Thank you mayor. Okay, does the council have any more questions or comments or anything like that? Well, then we don't. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming everyone.